Okay, Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this morning, invocation be given by Commissioner Fairchild.
Join me in this prayer that comes out of my tradition. This prayer has been a constant companion of mine for a while, and it's the prayer of Saint Francis Assisi. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, maybe we had a roll call, please.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to excuse Commissioner Joseph from this morning's meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, probably moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Joseph from this morning's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. So at this point in time, I think we have a motion. Oh, no, I don't have a motion. We need a motion for the approved minutes from last week.
So moved.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay. It should probably move and second to approve the motion or approve the minutes from last week's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, we have a petition. Any petition, Ms. Blackshear?
There are none, Your Honor.
There are none? Okay. I know we have one presentation this morning, so I'd like to call Mr. Steve Gondal, Director of Planning, Neighborhoods and Development, to the podium to give us a monthly update. Morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, Commissioners, Assistant City Manager, Madam Clerk. All right, thank you for having me today. Steve Gondal, Director for the Department of Planning, Neighbors and Development, to provide your August 2024 activity for demolition work with the Dayton Recovery Plan. So last month, we had a little bit of a slower month. I do note that we had actually probably about 10 demolitions. There was some emergency ones on here, but you'll see that most continuing with our ARPA demolitions, a few kind of closing out our ODOT. But we're on track. Again, as you look at the numbers, 159. We will be eclipsing that 188 by year end, but we're kind of working through the end of our ARPA Phase One demolitions, and we'll be moving into ARPA Two, and I'll talk more about that in the pipeline. As for our piles for the month, so we had 89 when we ended the month of July. We had four removed in August. Unfortunately, we had five added, so we are at 90. We're still below 100, but again, we had a net loss for the month of August.
Hard to keep up.
At times, it is. Locating, as I mentioned, you know, as we're phasing out of, kind of finishing up that ARPA Phase One, kind of taking on a few of the ODOT demolitions, you'll see that the work is still mostly in the ARPA-focused areas with a few kind of outliers throughout the city, and I'll talk about that later. To date for the year, again, you'll see that the work is touching several parts of our city. We added, our inspectors are continually following up on the properties rated a three or four from the Housing Condition Survey. We had 16 properties added to the structural nuisance list, and so that is bringing our total to about 392 for the calendar year of properties added onto the list that we're managing. For the pipeline, you'll see here, it's kind of a slow month, but what I want to talk about is that, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up with ARPA Phase One. We move into ARPA Phase Two. We have, working through procurement, we have about 300 properties on contracts going out. We have 200 for ARPA, about 50 for ARPA's fire pile. We have another 30 for a CDBG, and then there's potentially, as I mentioned previous months, that we get that award for 60 ODOT. So that is a significant amount that kind of ramp us up as we start 2025. So we have a few more to wrap up this calendar year, but we're going to be coming into a considerable amount of work, either at the end of '24 or beginning of 2025. Our befores and afters, 520 West Fairview, pretty significant change there. 34 Swisher Street, again, just a noticeable change. I really applaud our crews when they're out there in terms of, again, not just taking the structure, but really being mindful of the brush and the trees. And we do keep really mature trees, but we really, they do take all of that brush from the site. One, it'll make it easier to maintain that lot going forward, that we're not trying to mow around shrubs and brushes, and so doing a great job of clearing that out so that we can manage a lot in the future. So as I mentioned, the numbers at the beginning of the slide were low, we're about under 10 for the month, but I want to bring attention, we had some pretty considerable demolitions that really required significant staff time. On the top, 655 Salem, if you can remember seeing that building, it said like medical arts on there. Maybe from the outset, inside had completely just disintegrated and caved in. If you look at the photo on the right, I mean, I feel like it just brings that church to life that was there. I mean, removing that, the brush, and just, again, continuing the impact that we're having on that Salem corridor with leveraging the work that Public Works have done with improving the roadway, some other work in that area, but that is a really significant removal. That was done through our partners with the land bank at ODOT. The bottom one, again, Fout Hall, this was where we provide our technical services to ODOT and Omega. We didn't, and that was a pretty considerable removal, several weeks it took to kind of get that, but what it does is it frees up that site for our partners at Omega CDC to now rethink how they want to reutilize that space. 940 Steel, I wish Commissioner Joseph was here. This is one that he had worked on with a pastor at the adjacent church. It had really, it had been a fire pile. If you go by that site, it's a really difficult site. It has, it's sloped up on a kind of a hill. There's some retaining walls, and they really thought about not just the demolition, but how to regrade that site, and our crews actually even fixed the retaining wall, the stone retaining wall, to make it look a little bit more cohesive. And so that, if you go by there, it's really tremendous. I know that the church has reached out with interest with the site, so we will definitely be working with them to answer any questions they might have. And then 213 Orleans, again, this is just a view of some of the, you know, the conditions that were taken out. I mean, there's no roof on this structure, but again, leaving a lot there for potential And that'll bring me to the end of our work for August, and I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay. You know, it's really good when we have those addresses, and for the citizens who are watching have those addresses, and they can go by and see, you know, the before and afters. Well, I'm sure they've seen the before, and they're tired of the before, so they're tickled when they see the after, or sometimes just being in process. Okay. Commissioner Turner Sloss. Questions, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mr. Gondal.
Good morning.
It's good to see you. I always enjoy when you provide us with presentation in regards of the demolition as well as the structural nuisance that we have in the program. So I do have a couple of questions this morning. The first question that I have is in regards to, I believe it was a chart that you said there are 16 properties that were added to the structural nuisance program. So if I'm following, if I'm tracking, you said that initially these properties were rated as three or four?
They could have been a three or four, yeah.
Okay. So what transpired from the time that the, because we just received the report, I believe in May, if I'm not mistaken, if I don't have my months mixed up. So what transpired between May and August that it went from a three or to four? And if you could elaborate just for everyone to understand in terms of how we were rated as a three or four to now we're now listing those properties under this nuisance program?
Great question. So if you recall, when we did the survey, the bulk of our properties that we're working on are in the three rating, which is about 5,000. Those threes can be on a scale where it may have just had some things where barely, you know, it could have been a two, but for some reason it's a three, and it also could be on that back end of that three scale. And so when we had our inspectors go back out to their areas and do a more in-depth, it still could be a three, but it could be a three that's not on the structural nuisance list. And so they may have determined that the factor that rated it, put it as a three as a major repair needed, really, especially if there's a hole in the roof in the backside of the house, that would be it. Most of our fours, I should clarify, are already on the structural nuisance list, but it's this tail end of, the back end of the threes that we're catching. That, again, we have about 5,000, and that's probably going to lead to the driver for adding these on.
Okay. So with that being said, are we going to have that data reflected in the report, in the final report? I know at one point we used to call it the Blue Book, but it's no longer called the Blue Book, right? So how are we going to make sure that data is now captured in that final report? Because I don't want us to give this false impression that we have X amount of numbers that are slated to be demolished or in the nuisance program, but then as we are receiving these monthly updates, we're seeing an uptick in those numbers, and I just want to make sure that the data is matching, if you will.
I think you have a point where, I think it's just like a stepped layer down where we know our critical points are the threes and fours, especially the threes. It's just now dropping in to say, okay, now where does our structural nuisance align with all of those threes and fours and fives? And so I think that that number that we'll look, we'll be looking at is how many of our threes are now on that structural nuisance list. So that'll be probably a follow-up, and I'll work with the city manager on how we deliver that information to you all.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question. You said in the month of August, I believe it's a total of, thank you, 89, 90, if I have that right? But in the month of August, so there's a total of 89, 90, but in the month of August, we only were able to remove four fire piles. Am I following?
Yeah.
So my question is, what is the delay? Is, I know it's a very lengthy process in terms of RAPCA and a number of steps, if you will, that the demolition has to take, but that number seems very, it seems low.
So you're right. Those are the total haulouts that require the RAPCA to need notice. It's a stepped, a stepped-up process. We have to line the trucks with the plastic, and so it takes a lot longer than the ones that we've already vetted for not having asbestos. And so those four piles removed tend to, one, take more time, but two, it also depends on where we are in the contract. And so, as I mentioned, we are putting forward another fire pile contract, so we could also just be at the tail end of that contract, be moving into the next one. Typically, on a contract, we'll try to put five properties for an NOP. It's a manageable amount, and the reason why we do that is our vendors don't get paid until they complete that, but we don't want to have them do 50 properties to get invoiced, so we break it up so that after they do five, they can invoice us and get repaid and move on. So the four, you know, that probably, you know, probably about like one NOP where we had them do five properties there.
Thank you. Please extend my appreciation to the staff.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, no, thank you for this report. It's always sobering, but helpful to know where we're at. Following up on Commissioner Turner Sloss, how many current contracts do we have for demolition?
So ARPA One was three, Phase One, and then there was ARPA Fire Pile One, which is wrapping up. And then we had our ODOT, with our partnership with the land bank, our Ohio Department of Development Fund, we finished Phase One on that, and that was like 170-some properties, and then moving into their Phase Two, their second round contract, and I think that was the one where they had asked us for 60 properties, and so that one we haven't started. So we're in this kind of point where we're completing that now. Our vendors that were in Phase One, they will move on to Phase Two. We don't rebid, that was part of the RFQ process, that we wouldn't have to have the time to do it. Once we did it upfront, now we can just, they are qualified then to take future contracts, and that's what we had out, was the 200 ARPA Phase Two properties. So I think there's probably, what did I say? ARPA, regular ARPA Fire Pile, ODOT and CDBG, that's about four major funding sources of contracts right now that are either being awarded or are soon to be awarded in the next few weeks.
And what were those amounts again?
For units?
Yeah.
ARPA Phase Two was 200, CDBG was 30, Fire Pile was 50, ARPA Fire Pile, and then ODOT, I think, was 60 units.
Those are all fire?
No, no, that's everything.
That's demolitions and, okay.
That's all.
That's where I was getting confused, because, I mean, we only had 90, and I thought you were saying we had 200 file pile, a contract for.
No, 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 that, those are, those are ones that we've surveyed, dated the asbestos, so those 200 are not total haulouts. Those are just routine demolitions.
Okay. And then the other question I had, I think this goes over to Ms. Lofton. Last time, last month, we were talking about interventions on trying to slow down the number of fire piles. Do we have an update on the strategies that we're using? And I'm not sure which departments would all be involved in that.
On reducing the number of fire piles or?
Preventing fire pile.
Preventing fire pile.
Yeah.
I know that that work is ongoing. I don't have a firm answer for what the results are at this point, but I can get it for you.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful, because our poor departments just spinning their wheels, and if we can find a way to intervene and slow down the fire piles, it'd be, go a long way. But thank you for the work.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the update.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, thank you also. Did have a question, though. So you started to say regarding the Hope Center, Paul demolition, you said we provided technical support. Kind of elaborate on that. Do we have money in that, or are we?
No, that's our service with the land bank. Kind of our partnership is that they, they do provide, they pay us to be their demolition expert. So when you look at our service area, you'll see that sometimes we are, you'll see, sometimes we're working outside the city of Dayton, and that is kind of part of the, where our staff are paid by the land bank to supervise demolitions in the northern half of the county, and then City of Kettering supervises demolitions in the southern half, non-City of Dayton. And so Fout Hall was one where we lended our technical expertise per our working contract with land bank, although that was not a project that we had money in.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is not a technical question, but could you just give me a guesstimate, if you will, about the increased number of vendors, employees that we've been able to do contracts with because of all this work in terms of demolition?
Great question. So we have been working closely with HRC, Lamont and his team, and we had a call Friday, and we had reached out to 100-plus vendors, really, we're talking to Lamont, making sure that our list aligns with his list. And so our big thing is, one of the things coming forward is that breaking contracts up into smaller pieces to help our smaller vendors. One pathway is always as a subcontractor, there's a lot of parts to the process where we could bring in new companies, but also for those that may be ready to take on a little bit, trying to give them a manageable contract. And so my housing staff, working with Lamont, kind of tailored a contract where we put it into a smaller, from his expertise, to where some of the smaller vendors, local vendors, could have a greater role in that contract. So I would say it's probably the strongest relationship we've ever had with HRC and working to align our vendor list, our contract language, and it makes, because we want to make sure that it's accessible to our local vendors that are registered with HRC.
Yep, and those dollars stay in Dayton, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
Well, Mayor, we jumped ahead. I have some additions and deletions to the.
Oh, do you? Okay, all right.
So first of all, I would like to request the addition of Emergency Resolution Number 6828-24, objecting to the issuance of Liquor Permit Number 6200975, Mosaic Lounge LLC, doing business as Mosaic Lounge LLC, 229 Riverside Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45405, and declaring an emergency. And I would also like to request that we pull calendar item number eight, which is ordinance number 32112-24. It requires some additional work, and will be put back on the calendar next week.
Okay.
And that is all that I have.
All right, thank you very much. So now we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
Well, you jumped again. Ms. Lofton might have.
Ms. Lofton has something. I want to get to the citizens so quickly.
You do.
We'll wait, we'll wait. Okay, Ms. Lofton.
I will not stand in your way. I'll be very brief here.
All right.
Your Honor, I don't have any additions or deletions to this morning's calendar, however, I do have a few grants and grant awards that are before you tonight, or this morning, as emergency resolutions do highlight. Number 6824-24 and 6825-24 represent the authorization for three traffic safety grants totaling just over $333,000, all of which are administered by the Ohio Traffic Safety Office. These grants are provided to assist local governments and communities in accomplishing its mission of reducing fatal motor vehicle, fatal motor vehicle crashes as a result of impaired drivers or accidents. The police department was notified on September 6th regarding the award, and the performance period for the grants began October 1st. And since the city manages the distribution of most of those funds amongst 15 different jurisdictions, we really need to execute these contracts before October 1, so that the city and those other jurisdictions can meet the parameters of the performance contract provided by the Traffic Safety Office. Calendar item number 6826-24 is a request to apply for and accept a Reconnecting Communities Pilot Grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation in the amount of $2 million, with a local cash match of $500,000, which will come from the bipartisan infrastructure law funds that we have been granted. And this is to conduct a corridor study that should transform US 35 from Steve Wayland Boulevard all the way to South Gettysburg. The grant application seeks to revitalize US 35 to enhance connectivity, stimulate local economic and community development, and address the effectiveness of various on and off ramps along 35. The grant application was approved by the Transportation Policy Committee on August 8th and is due on September 30th, and therefore requires the, requires the emergency action of this body. And that is all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, all right, any citizens who are registered to speak?
There are none.
Okay, so we're going to do that. Commissioners, comments on calendar items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Turner Sloss, yes?
Thank you, Ms. Lofton. I appreciate you highlighting the various number of calendar items, and I just wanted to come in and thank the aviation department as well as our police department, PND, and a number of other Public Works, a number of other departments that are involved in the acceptance of the various grants. I do have a question for calendar item number seven. And just out of curiosity, with this Reconnecting Communities Pilot, the RCP, is that room for pedestrian bridge for, when you talk about 35, for the library? I know there are some issues and concerns in the safety of connecting our residents to those various resources over in that area. Do you know if that is?
So I'm, I'm not certain that the grant itself would cover a bridge, but it would certainly provide for connectivity to facilitate a bridge. And so part of the issues, again, are just how people are getting on to 35 and off 35, and so making sure that on ramps and the off ramps and the connections, all of that will be studied, and then funds are there for construction or reconstruction as deemed worthy by the study.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Fairchild.
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, about number seven, so that, I just wanted to make a note of that. That came out of my Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for National League of Cities, and I'm just glad, we're really robust in the way they were going after some of these things. It's such a great opportunity, I'm glad we're doing so. I think there is an opportunity for the, for the pedestrian bridge, too, out of some of this same pot of money. I don't know, we weren't successful the first time, but anyway, keep it up. This is really fantastic that we're getting $2 million. That's substantial.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay, good. So at this point in time, may I have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations?
I make a motion, Your Honor, to approve the city manager's recommendations.
Second.
Okay, got two seconds. All right, it's been probably moved in a second that we approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6824-24, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $249,975.83 on behalf of the city of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Resolution Number 6824-24.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in a second that Resolution Number 6824-24 be declared an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6824-24, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $249,975.83 on behalf of the city of Dayton. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6825-24, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $83,770.50 on behalf of the city of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared as an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Emergency Resolution Number 6825-24.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moved in a second that Resolution Number 6824-24 be declared an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6825-24, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $83,770.50 on behalf of the city of Dayton. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6826-24, authorizing the submission of an application for funding consideration by the United States Department of Transportation under the Reconnecting Communities Pilot, RCP, discretionary grant program, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6826-24 being declared an emergency be, declared an emergency and approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moved in a second that Resolution Number 6824-24 be declared an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
That's a, I'm sorry, that's 6825-24.
25.
No, that would have 26.
26.
Well, he said 24.
Okay.
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 26, right.
Okay. Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6826-24, authorizing the submission of an application for funding consideration by the United States Department of Transportation under the Reconnecting Communities Pilot, RCP, discretionary grant program. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading, Ordinance Number 32113-24, appropriating property designated as parcels 18SH and T and SH, T1 and T2 in connection with the South Main Street Reconstruction Project. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading, Ordinance Number 32114-24, appropriating property designated as parcels 26SH and T in connection with the Wayne Avenue Traffic Calming Project. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, ordinance number 32115-24, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2024. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, resolution number 6827-24, declaring the intention of the commission to vacate Brennan Drive from Hall Avenue to East Helena Street and Hall Avenue from Brennan Drive to North Keewee Street. Second reading, resolution number 6822-24, authorizing the city manager to accept fiscal, federal fiscal years 2025 and 2026, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grants, A I G, from the United States Department of Transportation for airport infrastructure and terminal improvements at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport and Dayton Wright Brothers Airport on behalf of the city of Dayton, in an amount not to exceed Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Jost? Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, resolution number 6823-24, authorizing the necessary tax levies, requesting the advance payment by Montgomery County, Ohio, to the city of Dayton, Ohio, of tax monies collected for 2025, certifying the same to the county auditor. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
And for the item that was added, first reading, emergency resolution number 6828-24, objecting to the issuance of liquor permit number 6200975, Mosaic Lounge LLC, doing business as Mosaic Lounge LLC, 229 Riverside Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45405, and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution 6828-24.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moved in a second that resolution number 6828-24 be declared an emergency. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6828-24, objecting to the issuance of liquor permit number 6200975, Mosaic Lounge LLC, doing business as Mosaic Lounge LLC, 229 Riverside Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45405. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, do you have any citizens, no, yeah, citizens who are registered to speak?
There are none, Your Honor.
There are none, okay. Ms. Lofton, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
You have none. Ms. Blackshear, closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Commissioners, any closing comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, very briefly, I would just like to thank Ms. Tay Winston for her leadership in the execution of the first annual Taste of Dayton. I also would like to thank Ms. Jackson and Mr. Beckham, I know they had their hand in it as well in terms of the planning and the coordinating of the event, which was a success in spite of, right, despite of rather, the rain, it was a great turnout. So kudos to Ms. Winston. Also, the Hispanic Festival was another successful event. Belmont Day, it was a busy weekend, as well as St. Anne's Hill, they celebrated their 50th anniversary this past weekend, so just a number of things, and we just appreciate all of the staff, because I know they had their hands in it as well, Recreation Youth Services, as well as the Public Works Department, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, no, thank you for the staff for supporting all those events, as well as the Air Force Marathon over the weekend, and invite our neighborhood leaders and people who are interested in how to improve their neighborhoods to this Neighborhood Summit on this Saturday at Belmont High School. What, does it start at?
9:00.
9:00 a.m.? All right, so be up, be there. More information on our website if you want to learn more about it, but I always find those, these summits have been really helpful in terms of helping people understand what's going on in the city, but also opportunity for their voice to be heard by other leaders in the community, and opportunity to network and to just build more energy for the well-being of our neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks a lot. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, thank you to my colleagues for bringing out those festivals and activities. Let's not forget Edgemont Solar Garden and their, their event that they had as well on Saturday. It was really, really good to touch with several of those. And then I just wanted to say, I mentioned the $2 million infrastructure grant out of